All right, perfect. Thank you, Brian. All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. Our first order of business is to enter, is to conduct an executive session for collective bargaining. And the reason for the executive session is Massachusetts General Law 3923B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on government bargaining or litigation positions. So with that being said, why don't we do this team? What we'll do is we'll take a roll call vote, even though this is a virtual meeting, everything has to be a roll call vote. But let's take a roll call vote to enter into executive session. And then what we'll do is we'll just jump right back into regular session where we conclude executive session. With that being said, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to enter executive session.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bryan Dick, second by Mr. Tronick. Roll call vote. Mr. Tronick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Bryan Dick?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well, so thank you. So, Brian Dorsett, at this time, why don't we shut down the live feed and like I said, we'll just jump back in when we're concluded with executive session. And I have a second by Mr. Tronick. Roll call vote. Mr. Tronick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Bryan Dick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So, I see some folks are joining. Thank you very much. We still have a few minutes here for our, to jump into our scheduled items for 7 o'clock. So why don't we, Mr. Montori?
There's one other invoice, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm sorry, proceed.
Yep, there's one other invoice covering February 16th through the 28th in the amount of $1,700, and I would recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Have a motion. I have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Tronick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Bryan Dick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right, just looking at the agenda. Mr. Montori, do we want to cover under new business? We have National Grid request for our underground easement at the new Center Fire Station, which we will be talking about during our scheduled items. And that's on 984 Main Street. So this is not a public hearing, Mr. Montori. This is kind of through you through the town, correct?
Correct. This is, this is, no one from National Grid is joining us. This is the town granting National Grid an easement to bring power to our new Center Fire Station. This is standard with any municipal building that we have, whether it's when we built the high school and now the elementary school, the regional communication center. So in order for National Grid to bring power off the street to the Center Fire Station, they need a grant of an underground easement. Easement that's presented in the board's packet has been reviewed by Town Council. It's the standard easement that we have with National Grid. And we'd like to get this work going. Just needs the board's approval to grant the easement and for the board to sign the document at some point this week.
Fair enough. Any questions from the board? Questions, comments?
Yes.
What is the pleasure of the board? Oh, please go ahead. Ms. Wellman?
So, we don't have anybody from National Grid coming to talk to us about this, though?
No, this is something that they, we, we, we need them to do. So it was put together, they put together the standard documentation for us to approve.
Okay. Is there any concern that it may impede future access to a rail trail back there? Because that would run right between those buildings.
It shouldn't, and we didn't think it would. Let me just double check. No, because it's coming off Main Street.
Okay. All right, so it's going to be underground from Main Street back to the building, so it'll be that, it'll be perpendicular to the area I'm thinking of. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, it's a pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the request for underground easement at New Center Fire Station at 984 Main Street.
I'll second that.
I have a second by Mr. Tronick. Roll call vote. Mr. Tronick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Bryan Dick?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. I know folks are joining for our scheduled items. I think we can probably take a few more of these. I don't have all the details. What's that, Mr. Montori?
You want to do the two donations to the police department?
Please, yes. Yeah.
So item seven and six, six and seven are the donations that were given to the police department as gifts. The first donation is $1,000 from the Cummings property to the Tewksbury Police Department. And the second is a $600 donation from the Salem Five to the Tewksbury Police Department in sponsorship of Patches for Autism Awareness by the Flutie Foundation. So I'd asked the board if they could accept both gifts. They will be put into gift accounts for the police department to spend.
All right, what an easy vote, huh? But just to elaborate on the Cummings property, it does look like that's $1,000 donation that can be used for any area of their greatest need for the Tewksbury Police Department. And it looks like Mr. John DeRusso from Tewksbury, who works at Cummings property, actually put that in. So I want to recognize John DeRusso for those efforts. Outstanding. Good stuff.
Chairman? I would make a motion to accept the donation from Cummings property and ask that the town manager send a thank you for the donation on behalf of the board and the fire, uh, police department.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Tronick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Bryan Dick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Mr. Tronick, do you have another motion for the next one?
I do. I will make a motion that we accept the $600 donation from the Salem Five for the Tewksbury Police Department and ask that the town manager respond with a letter of gratitude on behalf of the board and the fire, um, the police department as well.
I have a motion, a second by Ms. Wellman. Roll call vote. Mr. Tronick? Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Bryan Dick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Mr. Tronick, do you have another motion for the next one?
I do. I will make a motion that we accept the $600 donation from the Salem Five for the Tewksbury Police Department and ask that the town manager respond with a letter of gratitude on behalf of the board and the fire, um, the police department as well.
I have a motion, a second by Ms. Wellman. Roll call vote. Mr. Tronick? Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Bryan Dick?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Okay. That almost brings us to the top of the hour. We have 7 o'clock, so let me just look. Trying to see if we have any. Okay, we do, okay. Rep. Trump, is that, is that, is that Mr. David Robinson?
It is aye, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very good. Okay, I just see David there. Okay, very good. And I think we're just awaiting Senator Finegold.
He'll be on momentarily.
Okay, very good. Okay. Perfect timing. See that? 7 o'clock. So we'll just give it a few more minutes, we'll jump in. And I don't believe there's any more business to take care of here. I know we have a presentation under new business, so. And just for folks jumping on, we're waiting our 7 o'clock scheduled item. We're going to jump in here momentarily. All right, why don't we do this? Why don't we jump in? Because this could, this is pretty cool that we get our representatives and our senator. Just trying to look if that was Senator Finegold. Other folks jumping on. So here, why don't we jump in? So 7 o'clock scheduled item is Senator Finegold, State Rep. Nguyen and State Rep. Robinson. So very, very nice to have you. And so what I like to just do for the board is just very open forum. And if, and if you're not, if you're not talking, maybe just hit the mute button, please. Thank you, Barry, for joining. Thank you, Senator. Perfect timing.
Great to be here.
Okay. And, and it's very open forum. What I like to do is, as far as the select board, what we'll do is this. For each of us, maybe we have like one or two things that we want to share, either from a budget standpoint or a legislative standpoint for the priorities of Tewksbury. And let's not try to overlap. And again, this is, we'll try to use our time wisely. So again, very open forum. I know the state budget's coming up, you know, with FY '22, so very timely. And if we don't get anything in the budget, there's always a way with a future within a bond build. And if we don't get anything in the budget, there's always a way with a future within a bond bill, bond bill. So perfect timing. So let's kick it off, again, open forum. Ms. Stronach, again, why don't we start with you? Again, anything around the budget or legislative priorities for Tewksbury? Maybe share a few with the board? And we'll just continue down the list and we'll have very open conversation.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to our delegation for being here. We truly appreciate all the work and the efforts that you do on behalf of our residents. It's greatly appreciated. I know I'm going to sound like a broken record to the committee, and I'm not sure that our delegation hasn't heard this from other community as well. But I am very concerned with the impacts that COVID is going to have once the additional funding and the resources stop as we go on to the road to recovery. And would love to hear your thoughts around that. I also am concerned about the impacts to our schools. And so I know that I had a conversation with Representative Trump about that. And then again, when we look around at what our community priorities are, our community and our residents have really suggested that, you know, they would like us to slow down on our building out. But we do still have projects like our DPW that are in significant need of infrastructure changes. And I would love to hear their thoughts on ways that we could creatively work with the state to improve that facility without impacting our residents. And again, I know that we have done our fair share in terms of the stormwater and putting that forward and giving that cost, shifting that cost so that we can protect our water for our residents at the cost. And I am not sure, once again, if that our proactiveness is being rewarded at the state level. So those are the things that I think would be good to discuss and would like to hear what others have as well.
This is kind of, this is a little bit tricky with the virtual meetings. If we were in Town Hall, we could point and do the facial expressions. So just for consistency, how about Senator Feingold? And we'll change up the batting order on occasion.
Absolutely. So first of all, I, I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be here, say a couple of words. It's always great to have this dialogue. I do prefer it in person, but, you know, we are getting there. First of all, I want to just start off and say that, that I'm incredibly optimistic and very bullish, not only on the future of the state, but also the future of the town. I think considering where we were a year ago and where we could be, I definitely think that, you know, we're in a very good position. I think the thing that, you know, Selectwoman Stronach raised some very, very good points, stuff about funding, projects. And like anything else, if we don't have necessary funding, we can't do any of those things. But our revenues have been pretty good. There are many times I've, I've come in front of the board of select people and basically said that revenues are declining, we have to start making cuts. I, I don't think we're in that position. And I, and I think with the monies that we're getting from the feds, I think we're going to continue to be helpful. The other thing that I think we're very aware of is the drop in enrollment in education. And I think we're very aware that we don't want communities like Tewksbury to be penalized if they've seen a drop in enrollment because many, many kids have decided to go elsewhere for schooling. So we are aware of that. We want to make sure that we bring as much, you know, Chapter 70 money, Chapter 90 money, and keep things flowing. So I don't want to monopolize all the time, but I'll hand it over to some of my colleagues. But I will say that, you know, we have a phenomenal delegation, Representative Nguyen, Representative Robertson, who work with the team. And the three of us are relentless advocates for the communities, for the community, and we'll continue to make sure we do that.
How about Rep. Nguyen?
Thank you. As going to Senator, really appreciate this opportunity for an exchange, for this conversation and exchange ideas of how we could collaborate together. I'm always thrilled to represent Tewksbury with my colleagues here and really appreciate the relationship with the board. Going to the point of talking about being optimistic, I am also very optimistic. We anticipate a large chunk of money from the federal level coming down. And so that's something to be excited about. And in talking about Chapter 70 funding, of course, we're going to continue to advocate for that. But we also need to wait to, to get guidance on how the additional money could trickle down to the, to the local level and want to make sure that we are getting as much as possible, working on the circuit breaker, working on funding for transportation. And I'm thrilled to see that it seems to so Tewksbury is underway for at least an elementary school to open by April 5th. And we're doing what we can to bring vaccines more locally to make sure that people have access to vaccines and want to support you all in any way for the health and safety of the towns. And would look forward to getting more ideas from you as to what your needs are so that we can keep an eye out for opportunities as they arise. As the chairman said, you know, whether it's in the budget or bond bills that may be coming down the pipeline.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I just have a follow-up question. Thank you very much for that. And I, I'm too very excited to see our students coming back on April 5th. Are you still in a position where you think that that should be a delay? Or have you reconsidered that position?
Okay, so, Selectwoman Shona, I think from our conversation, I, it was never a supportive of delay. I, I heard what you said, that Tewksbury is opening, and we are in full support of opening as soon as possible, which is why we have been pushing for vaccination for teachers and trying to find ways for, to get them to do that. And as we discussed with the, the bill, the bill would not delay that opening at all because this is something that you all have worked so hard at the local level to make sure that that happens. And I'm really thrilled to see that you were able to get to that point.
That, thank you. I appreciate that. And I just want to say that that is due to the diligence of our superintendent and the administrative team and the reopening team that has a member of Mr. Montori, a member of our police, a member of our fire. So I just want to say that the success of the school department being able to open is really a combination of the entire town working and rallying with the school committee and the school administration, as well as the parents and the teachers across the community to make that happen. So I'm thrilled to hear Senator Feingold talk about the concerns with the drop in enrollment because, as you know, Tewksbury has come a long way. I, you know, I think Senator Feingold will remember way back in the day when the school department and the town departments were a little bit at odds. And it's really great to hear that you're going to try to help us hold that enrollment harmless so that we'll be able to continue because I hate to have to rob Peter to pay Paul.
And I understand, you're not the only community. So just think it's, it's, you know, obviously so many other communities are in that same boat. So, you know, we, we, you know, that's just, just not a Tewksbury problem. It's really.
Absolutely.
As well.
So I just want to thank you for your work on that at the state level because I think that that's important. And then lastly, I also love that you talked about that Chapter 90 money. And I too look forward to the guidance of what this federal money can be spent on because it is going to be quite a large chunk of money. And I would like to, you know, see some Godrails so that we're working in a, in a good manner to get the most effective use of that money. So thank you so much for that.
Well, it seems like the guidance is not out yet, but as soon as it comes out, we will definitely send it your way. But I, you know, all of us have been in communication with the Education Committee, and they've been working very hard with ways and means. And one of the things that, the discussions that we've had with them is that they are going to be coming out with the information, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. And then we'll get that information to us so that we can get it to you all.
Great.
All right. How about the Representative Robinson? Maybe have the floor. I think the MRE's questions might have got lost in the translation. But Mr. Robinson, let's, you can have the floor for a little bit, and then we'll, then we'll continue the dialogue.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. There's a, there's a few things which I wanted to bring up following Select and Stronach's questions. I know you members of the board, us at Town Meeting, had heard from the residents. And Mr. Chair, you and I had a conversation about the status of our capital buildings and what have you in the municipal level there in Tewksbury and what our kind of short intermediary and long-term focus is up for the towns coming up while balancing out the challenge of not overburdening some of our residences. Keeping that in mind, during the first phase of this 192nd session filing, there was a few bills which we as our delegation will talk amongst ourselves, but acknowledged the importance of these buildings, but also the expense and the impact on the local budgets. The House builds are 2211 in 1617. And they are kind of borrowing the idea that the state, the Commonwealth already has with the school building authority. It looks at potentially standardizing certain plans or, and/or creating funding mechanisms in order for the state to endow the towns. There's two House versions, there's two Senate versions of these dockets. They will ebb and flow as they go through the committee process, but it's something that I think that as our local delegation and our state delegation, we need to have a dialogue on this. You know, it's nice to have unique buildings. It's nice to have buildings which have the theme of the overall town. But at the end of the day, we need to have a DPW building that's functional and taxpayer-friendly. And by what these bills seem to be suggesting with the Municipal and Public Safety Building Authority, would take the best designs across the state, given the town's certain economic or population growth and trends, standardize them and take some of the burden off of the locals, reroute some of that state revenue back and give us a building that's not only functional, but also taxpayer-friendly. So, you know, I know that's all on our mind, especially the DPW building. We had a great conversation, Mr. Chair, about that after the, the Town Meeting. When was it, two or three years ago at this rate? And then the water bills, the water bill is, is something that, and then I hate to say, but COVID did kind of knock this aside. I have the, the luck of now being reappointed to the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources, as well as the Committee on Utilities and Telecoms. And if you recall, when I came in front of the board last time, we had a discussion about the neglect of the state's municipal reimbursement rate for wastewater and stormwater projects. It seems like once our sewage and water system hit the 128 belt, all of us were kind of forgotten outside it, which is frustrating. Tewksbury, Andover, Barica, our neck of the woods is absorbing a lot of development. And regardless of your opinion on that, it seems like there's a bit of neglect. So I did reintroduce the bill that would require the state to contribute at least a minimum $5 million. Excuse me, $4 million with $400,000 to Tewksbury. I do not believe with my conversations with the chairs of my committees that that specific earmark of Tewksbury would likely make it through committees. They tend to want to have a specific earmark like that go through the budget process. But if we move the total amount that the state puts in this account for any town to apply, presuming the same amount of towns apply, as did with Tewksbury over the previous years, we'd be seeing an increase regardless. So that's one of them. And then the other one I also mentioned last time, and I did refile, was expanding the tax credit for repairing a failing septic system. Right, it's, it's $6,000 over four years. It doesn't make much sense that we don't also allow that tax credit to be changed, excuse me, to be applied if someone's changing from failed septic to sewage. And my preliminary discussions with the new chairs of these committees this year seems to be that that bill might actually be handled better by just approaching the head of DEP when they start winding down their COVID response and maybe just doing that through an executive action in conjunction with Department of Revenue. But that would allow Tewksbury residents who want to get on sewage to take out that connection cost upfront and reduce it through these tax credits and thus diffuse the cost of our sewage and water through, you know, the more people on the system, the cheaper it is overall. So that's something that their attorneys are reviewing internally and getting back and seeing whether or not this legislation serves its purpose by highlighting the issue on hand. Is it better to pursue it and enact it into law? Or can we sidestep that process entirely and have the commissioners through some sort of executive action expand that in the tax code? So.
All right, good deal. How about, Mr. Krappman? You got a couple of items for, you got a couple of items this year?
I bet they can guess what I want to talk about anyway. Route 38. That's where we're starting, that's where I'd like to end. We've got a couple of projects that we got going. We're able to get from like the projects that they, they finished, they're doing Salem and South right now. We were able to get some work from the Wilmington Town Line up to that project. And we're able to get some resurfacing from Old Boston Road to Pike Street. The next project is going from Colonial to Old Boston Road. And it's going to have bicycle lanes, handicap accessibility, sidewalks. But the frustrating part is it always leads to nowhere. So there'll be sidewalks that will lead up to Colonial Ave. They'll drop people off on a blind corner on Route 38 with no accessibility to continue forward. We applied for Mass Works Grants. And when we applied for the Mass Works Grants, that would have extended the project to go up to where the Circle Health Project was. And we have that plan all designed. We've applied numerous times for either a Mass Works Grant or some other granting, and each, and every time it was denied. Knowing that there's probably going to be a stimulus package coming through, we kept that plan alive. And so that's already designed and ready to go. And my number one thing is I want to make sure that the funding is prioritized and that, that project stays on time and on budget for, for this year, and it doesn't get delayed. Secondly, I'd like to have us push for the areas where they resurfaced. That's great, but add additional drainage and sidewalk improvements along those areas as well as funding that Mass Works Grant project that we applied for. There's no way that I want to have a beautiful resurfaced section of roadway going from Town Hall heading up to South Tewksbury and then just leave people to Colonial Ave with no sidewalk on either side or bicycle accommodations that don't lead anywhere. You know, the state is always touting healthy transportation. And now we're in COVID where we want people to be outside getting fresh air, walking, using sidewalks, using bicycle accommodations. And for that not to continue is a shame. And so, you know, I think that's an easy sell for them to find funding. There's always contracts each year that can provide additional funding for sidewalk improvements. I would like that to be prioritized, and I'd like to see that happen. And, and the second thing I would like to see happen also is we're going to open our fields and our ballparks. And I know there's, we're in a new world. And what, what we had and what we have for facilities, there's going to be tons and tons of kids there. And in the new world, I want to see places where kids are able to wash their hands and have actually facilities to keep themselves, you know, our porta-potties aren't cutting it, as far as I'm concerned. So I would like to see some sort of funding where we could at least have hand washing stations, some sort of funding that should be all funded through the COVID Relief Fund. And is money going to be available through the state? So I'd like to see some earmarks directed to ballparks and fields so that when the kids are down there, they have some sort of safe things and the town shouldn't have to pay for it. That we should have some sort of funding source to help with that. And that's where I'll leave off, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any feedback at all, or we can bounce to, we can go to the next?
Well, I, I can, I can speak to Route 38 a bit. And I know there was that, that Mass Works Grant that went to Colonial. If I remember, that was a, a timing issue back three or four years ago. But we teed up in anticipation, right, that, that, the, forgive me, I forget the six-digit project string off the top of my head. But the Route 38 from Colonial to Old Boston would be going forward this year. And we as a delegation put in the $400,000 in bonds. So we teed up, excuse me, the $400,000 in bonds was to move the project forward from Colonial all the way to Shaw Sheen, particularly because the Livingston Street. particularly because the Livingston Street, Main Street, in the section in front of Market Basket and then Shaw Sheen in Maine itself. I mean, uh Slap and Kratman knows, being a expert within DOT, those intersections, I think, are what C or D at best off hours and and get very close, if not are constantly failing during rush hour. So um we set those bonds up in anticipation of moving that project forward and and keep the Route thirty eight process and repaving um going. So um that's easy. We we've 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 kind of primed us uh in that aspect. And the next thing, as Mr. Kratman knows um from his role in DOT and the rest of the board does as well from working on the local projects, is getting the governor and the treasurer to sell these bonds, which um with the fiscal situation, I argue I argue that it actually it should be easier with with some of the chaos in the stock markets. People are turning to to state and federal bonds as a safe investment to make. And we can get decent rates on it. But um that's something that we we anticipated, we promised um last time we before the board that we would look at uh absolving some of the town with the design process, considering it is a state road. And um that's only one part. We also put in bonds to um into, uh excuse me, to review and intervene on anticipated increased traffic. They're at the end of Pleasant Street in Maine, especially with the fire department development and the combined elementary school project. I am particularly concerned that if our men and women in the fire department or the police department just up, what, two or three addresses there need to respond during peak hours, especially with parents bringing their kids to pick up and drop off. I I I just worry about the the overall traffic impact on that intersection as is with those projects. So we also placed bonds in to take a complete look at um Pleasant Street in Maine there as well, given the new developments, given the fact that we're gonna need to make sure our first responders can get through there even in the most thick of traffic situations, as well as uh anticipate the increased demand on that specific intersection, given the traffic from the new elementary school project up the road. So now, like I said, you know, not to be a broken record, it's a matter of getting the governor and the treasurer to release those bonds on markets with the intended uh sales of those bonds to fund our project.
Very good. How about how about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to extend my thanks to our delegation for being here this evening. I have had a lot of communication with the three of you over the past year, in particular, the last six months, as we've talked about vaccinations and testing sites locally. So I've been pretty vocal on that, and I appreciate um the meetings and the discussions that we've had as we've tried to move things through. I have three items I'd like to raise as usual. In addition to echoing uh the concerns that my colleagues have, I share them as well. First, the ambulance funding didn't come through last year. And um we need to have the ambulance funding in order to be able to appropriately respond to all of our residents and the state hospital. I feel that we should bake this funding in. It shouldn't be a special request. Um and I'm wondering if we should, and you have to answer this now, but we need to explore perhaps the idea of a pilot program with the state hospital. Uh they do not do a payment in lieu of taxes to the town. They do take quite a few resources from the town, and it's great. We do a great job responding to the state hospital. But we need to make sure that we're um that the residents of Tuxbury are not the only ones shouldering the the cost of that. So I'd like to pursue maybe a a different funding source that's a bit more reliable um for making sure that our first responders have the funds they need to run that ambulance. Second, I'd like for you to pursue options as they come forward through your committees for senior tax relief at the state level and perhaps making that a local option of the State Association of Assessors is working on something. I think that there's two camps that are sort of battling on that. I don't know the status of that work right now. But one turns your assessors sort of into CPAs with a lot of work on assessing how seniors um are filing their taxes and their assets and so forth. And one is a little bit more based on programs we already have in place. And it's a little bit easier to administer for municipalities. And so as that work goes forward, I hope that you will speak for the option that is easier for municipalities to implement. We don't need to hire additional resources to offer good senior tax relief. And it's if it's up for a local option, then our residents can vote on it at town meeting and see if that is something that is acceptable to them. Finally, um and I know you know that this is one of my biggest concerns is um our stormwater runoff and overflow into the Merrimack River and protecting our drinking water. Additionally, PFAS concerns um throughout our drinking water and um our our all of the water and everything everywhere else is, we all know PFAS is everywhere. So um as those bills come before you, I also ask that you continue to do great work advocating on behalf of our drinking water here in Tuxbury. Every time something comes up with the Merrimack River and it's almost daily, there's something. You know, it's it's important that we're we're doing everything we can um and into the future and supporting those communities that need the help to prevent those sewer overflows and stormwater overflows into our drinking water. So um those are the top three things I have for you right now. And once again, I want to thank you all for your um your indulgence when I call you and email you with lots of questions and asking for for support. And I want to thank you for your continued work on behalf of the residents of Tuxbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman. All right, uh if there's any comments, so we can move to uh Mr. Brian Dick.
Uh just briefly, uh thank you for bringing that up. And um I can tell you that we have been talking extensively about the ambulance funding and what we are um have been hoping for is that of course, you all know the economic status for our last uh budget was very difficult. And we're gonna continue to try to push for this again, really hoping that uh the federal money will come in for emergency services. But of course, we're um I would love to explore further with you about how to um make this so that it's not, you know, a uh a yearly uh request. But also, you've really spoke my language when we were talking about, you know, stormwater and runoffs. And as you know, a bill passed last session uh for notification, but we know the notification for these, it's not enough. And so um I'm filing a bill to try um to push for actual testing. So once an incident happens, notification is one thing, but we need to know how that affects the actual drinking water. Um and also, uh there are other efforts to um to increase the number of PFAS uh the types to make sure that we are testing for them. And um would love to chat with you uh more offline about this because I know that there are there are several bills relating to this that I have been actively uh working on or following.
Real quickly, Chairman Kelly, that um as far as senior tax credit, you know, something we may want to look at is senior, you know, circuit tax credit. Might be a way to just bring in more seniors, get more involved. And um I know that works quite well. So just maybe something we should all think about.
Very good. How about uh Mr. Brian Dick?
Hi, uh thanks again uh for all three of you coming today uh sitting in front of us and and sharing ideas. A big think tank. This is great. I I want to thank, I think it was Mr. Feingold that helped us with the liquor licenses. I appreciate that. Uh I think you helped us get those uh so we can continue to build um bring new businesses into Tuxbury. We were we were without some liquor licenses and you helped. It was a it was a year long process, but I appreciate that.
By the whole delegation as well, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. I'm sure the two reps representatives was also we're uh spearheading that as well. A lot of things were talked tonight. I'm not gonna really bang the drum. I think Mr. Kratman hit the nail on the head. Main Street is the huge is the vein of Tuxbury from Lowell to Wilmington. Um it's in rough, rough shape. So anything you guys can do there to help bring in some funding for that and help us complete that. We really, really need some assistance there. Just driving that road, I'm sure. Everybody can can share the same thoughts on that. Um you know, you look at uh Belrika, what they did with cobblestones and and lights and things like that. It would be really nice to have a a really you know, a better a better uh vein through Tuxbury, I guess. Is anything you guys can do there? I appreciate it. I know you've you've mentioned uh that. I I I feel it's encouraging, uh Mr. Feingold, that you Senator Feingold, he said that you you feel uh revenues up, uh the federal relief. You so I guess from the two representatives, I do have the same sentiments that you feel that Tuxbury is gonna get funding, uh relief funding, things that can help us. Uh I know Mr. Feingold thinks it's it's a positive. How about Representative Robinson and Gwynne?
Yeah, I I do. I I think I think it's been exceptionally a a tough year for small businesses and that. But just from all three of us can tell you, working with our constituent affairs, working with the small businesses, that they are itching and raring to go. And I think, given the vaccination rollout, despite our critiques of it, despite your critiques of it, the general public in that, we're making ground well in that regard. It can be quicker and it's actually something that several of you touched upon. But that aside, I think the small businesses are are itching and raring to go. I think that combined with the federal government stimulus, we have a lot of touches. It's gonna slingshot out of here. And with the increasing economy, obviously comes increasing revenues in that regard. So um I'm really looking forward to seeing what the guidelines from the federal government are. I think there's real, um and I'm sorry for apologizing. Someone has feedback right now. But I think within those guidelines, once we get it kind of clarified and and ready to go, we'll be hitting the ground at double pace, you know, um almost a full out sprint. So uh I do share the senators' sentiments that it's been a tough year. We're starting to climb out, but boy, we're gonna be we're gonna be roaring out of here if we do this right with federal help and then returning revenues.
So just on that note, I know you you kind of segued in my next question, just uh maybe some a few comments from each of you on the current vaccination and um where we are, what your thoughts are, what's the what's the state doing? How how's it helping uh uh the community of Tuxbury?
Well, if I may, um you know, I once again, I'm also very, we had a long hearing with the governor today and um that was interesting. Um but I'm I'm very optimistic about uh what's gonna happen. I mean, in the next thirty days, probably forty five days, we're gonna go from a situation where there is a kind of scarcity of vaccine to where there is plenty of vaccine. So um I I'm I think by late May, early June, it's not gonna be a question of getting people to get vaccinated. It's it's more a question of 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 just really pushing people to be vaccinated. So uh I think that's number one. Number two, the thing that I'm really pushing for is that, you know, I want Fenway Park to open up full. I want I don't want any restrictions on our kids this fall. I want people to be in the stands at at Tuxbury football games. And I I frankly, I didn't want us to have to think about wearing masks, but there's a price we have to pay. And I I do think everybody needs to be vaccinated. And I do think that if you want to go to Fenway Park and you want to go to TD Garden, you should show something that you're vaccinated. So I think that's gonna be the next step because the hard part about this whole thing is that there's still a segment of the population that is still very scared, even if they're vaccinated. So we still have a lot of work to do. And but I do think that if there were um, you know, if there were large scale events and people knew everybody in that room were vaccinated, I think we could really move quick. Because I I want to get back to days where, you know, we can just be at outside, not have to worry about wearing a mask or even you know, thinking about the the this virus, but there's a trade off and everybody needs to get vaccinated.
And to follow up on the senator's point is that the way to get people vaccinated is to make sure that we continue to push for the state to utilize local infrastructures. You guys know your people. You know their hesitations. We want to be able to work with you to get that information out there to address the vaccine hesitancy. And to be frank, the mass vaccination sites, I mean, they are working, but they don't work for everyone. And so the local Board of Health and the Councils on Aging, all of these infrastructures at the local level, what we have been pushing for is to make sure that the state sends the vaccines locally here, especially for, you know, regional collaboratives. And I know that um this delegation has been working to to make that happen, and we will continue to advocate for that.
I mean, I, and again, this is this is just me. I I'm I'm a little frustrated with um and I'm sure some of you on on the local level shared it. I understand that managing three hundred and fifty one distributions among cities and towns is is a nightmare, uh especially when you consider Lawrence, Lowell, Boston, and that, that that urban municipalities of our state can have multiple sites. We, as a delegation, I I and one of my staff members, um and I'm sure Mr. Montori told you now, months ago, reached out to your colleagues, Andover, Barica, Reading, North Reading, Wilmington, and Woburn earlier, before the governor even announced solicitation of a regional collaborative to discuss it at the Shriners Auditorium. We looked at the state hospital, but with all due respect, we didn't want to invite that many people in the general public to go onto the state hospital grounds where they're getting lost, where they're going into buildings which are secure and what have you. But the very fine folks at the Shriners said that they would consider and were kind enough to negotiate with us a um a very discounted rate. Myself and um Rep. Winn, Senator Feingold, Senator Tar, Rep. Jones, and Rep. Lombardo, we talked to the Shriners, uh Senator Tar found Senator Tar found the lead on on a physician. And we gave this to the governor and the silence is deafening right now. Um I'm a little fed up with it, in case you couldn't tell, I'm being very diplomatic, but my worry is is following what Rep. Winn and Senator Feingold said. And and my frustration, I'm not saying I speak for the entire delegation. This is my own personal thing. We have heard that the vaccine allotments will increase. I find it a little frustrating that we're choosing to vaccinate folks solely through Walgreens or CVS. The Shriners, um and this isn't my opinion, this is the pharmacist's opinion, could do two thousand people a day. He said that he had volunteers to go out and hit up places like Heatherwood. He could send out folks to work in conjunction with, say, our folks at the local Department of Public Health to get, as in one case, and he's not even a constituent of our delegation, but just has a friend in Tuxbury, a gentleman who's unfortunately completely bed bound, can't get out, can't go to a mass vaccination site. So I think these regional collaboratives are are very important. Um I'm sure Mr. Montori circulated the letter that we, as a delegation, signed on to urging the governor to authorize this this regional site up in our neck of the woods so that folks in Tuxbury don't have to worry about taking mom or dad all the way to Danvers. Don't have to worry about sitting in the car four hours. You know, especially with some folks who might have a corrobidity, so they're high risk, but sitting in a parking lot that long might actually be a general concern to the threat or, excuse me, a general threat to uh the concern of their their health and welfare. In some cases, it could even be life threatening. So um I'm I'm pretty frustrated with that, but as you can see by the letter, we we launched this project weeks ago. We found every single thing to get that project up. And um that's something that we can ask you, our local delegation, is if you could sign on to that joint letter with those other six municipalities so we could really put the pressure on getting Secretary Sunters and Governor Baker to give those allotments for vaccinations for our neck of the woods. It would be very much appreciated. You know, the Shriners may not be the most accessible from all of Tuxbury, but it beats the hell out of Danvers.
Yep. Oh, okay. I know my time's almost up, Mr. Chairman. I just two quick things. And I'll have Representative Gwen, uh if you could just finish up with this, but for Mr. Robinson, that sewer rate relief fund, I know that that's uh you mentioned that and 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 we don't have to get into it anymore, but I I just keep that on the on the burner like you have it on the burner. You know, when I think the last thing was January fifth, two thousand twenty one, no further.
I know.
So that's a big thing for us, obviously. And then um Representative Gwen, on the retirement credit for essential public sector workers, and I could take this offline with you. I just, I'm trying to understand the reason for that bill real in in a nutshell. You don't have to go elaborate too much, but I know you you mentioned to our town manager, he gave us some feedback that that he was looking at for a status on that. And you mentioned that it's still kind of the works, but I guess real briefly, like why? Why go ahead with something like that? Is that a need? Why why is it? Why is it a need? And and um, you know, I think about small businesses and there's a lot of people hurt. And why just, you know, the public sector workers of Commonwealth?
Well, thank you for the question. I so I think that um for this bill, I I'm sure you all have heard, there are sixty five hundred bills filed. And this is not a bill. I think there was a misunderstanding that I filed this bill, which I didn't. I it's one of the many bills that I've signed on to. And as you know, with the legislative process, we're very early on in the two year session. So the And as you know, with the legislative process, we're very early on in the two-year session, so the bill will go through many changes. All of us throw ideas out there at the, at the beginning of session, and then the committees do the work, to do the research, to get feedback, and then to, um, the bill that. If it even comes out, will look very different from the bill as is now. And so the idea here is to reward folks who have been on the front lines. Working for the state to give them extra credit for retirement because they have put themselves in harm's way. And of course. You know, other people in private sectors as well, but as a state, it is easier for us to deal with state employees. Uh, versus the private sector. And that's why the bill starts, um, uh, on the, uh, with, uh, public employees. And, you know, to be frank, for us, we. Sign on to bills, uh, something we might support the idea, but the details really will is, uh, the work of the committee. And of course, we continue to, um. Give feedback to the committee based on what we hear in the community, but as of right now, because the bill has just been filed and. Actually, Representative Robertson and myself reached out to the lead sponsor to get some of the questions. And even he. Said that, you know, we we need to, we need more time. We just filed this. More work has to be done.
So I think from a businessman in Tewksbury and speaking for other businesses in Tewksbury representing them, I think, um, you know, to have. If it, hopefully, it's a, it's it's the frontline work and it's not all Commonwealth employees, that type of thing. I'm sure that'll happen. So. I I appreciate you opening up on that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Uh, thanks for coming.
Chair, Mr. Chair, can I, can I just jump in for one second? So, this is, this is, uh, unfortunately, probably going to be our last meeting with the great selectman, Brian Dick, and, uh. You know, I just want to thank him and his family for all their service over the years. And. I I look at this as a sabbatical because at some, some point in the future, you'll come back and do something, but I just want to. Thank you for your work and your family's work. And as you know, I I thought the world of your late dad and and your family's just been taken, so. You know, just want to say thank you because public service is hard and, uh, you've done an amazing job, as always.
Well, thanks very much. I think all three of you guys are grateful for Tewksbury and I've enjoyed working with all three of you guys. So thank you.
All right, perfect. I'll bring it home. I was going to, I have a laundry list, but I think everything essentially was covered. Uh, I'm not going to go back in time, but that vaccination was an absolute, um, it was a horror show, it was a mess. But I can tell you, every week we made steady progress, um, you know, as a community, as a state. So, again, I'll be positive in that sense. Um. And the only really angle I want to just attack one more time is that state hospital. They are very good neighbor, um. Countless beds, countless jobs for Tewksbury residents, um, the, you know, and the employees that don't live in Tewksbury use. And buy pizzas in Tewksbury. So again, very, very good neighbor in the state hospital. I just think we can get, um. Get a little more funding, um, you know, from the state hospital in lieu of what we do for all of the services that essentially. We, Tewksbury residents, pay for. So, um, what I'll do based on this meeting, and this was really good, we covered a lot of ground. Uh, I'll watch the video here and I'll just take copious notes and I'll send it to our delegation. Um, but I really think, you know, we've been talking about the state hospital for all, for many years. It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like we get any traction as far as additional revenue for the town. Um. So again, so that's your big homework assignment. Again, just on my behalf is, how do we get some more funding in lieu of everything we do? Um, with the state hospital. Again, we're not very good neighbor, but, um, it's just one area there. We just haven't made too much progress. So with that being said, I can't thank you enough and and, um, for coming. And like I said, I'll bubble these notes up, I'll send it out to the delegation. Um, and we, let's not be strangers, you know, if we need to rebe, um, sync back up in a month or two, let's do that. Um, let's try to track some of these items that we talked about today, to come back and show the residents that we listened. Uh, we didn't go in solution mode on today's call. However, we took actions, uh, and we executed against those actions. So, um, I can't thank you guys enough for for coming and. Um, for your time.
Well, I mean, like, what, what do I do the honor of Dan Ballsley on this call? Like, what, 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 how are we so lucky?
We have a big agenda, Mr. Feingold, big agenda tonight, so.
He has only got a legend here, so I tell you, this is, this is big time. So listen, thank you all so much, but. Whatever did come in your gray hands, so I don't know what is, but you're here with the legend.
All right, good deal. Thank you, Representative Robinson and Gwen. Thank you very much, guys. All right, very good. All right, next order of business, a little bit behind, but that's okay. Um. Ms. Stronach, I might turn over you for the elementary school building committee update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As I had asked at the last meeting, um, I wanted to, um, provide an update to the elementary building committee. For the town residents, and I've asked, um, our project manager and our project team from Consigly and Flansburgh to join us. Um, I'm not sure if any of our members were able to, uh, participate tonight, but they are all working very, very hard. And the project is moving along very well. And with that, I would like to turn it over to our project manager. Um, Peter Collins, he will do the introductions of who's here with us and provide you all with, um, what I believe is going to be a very exciting update. Of the progress of the project. So thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
May I go ahead, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. If I may, I'd like to share my screen, uh, if Brian Dorian says that's okay.
Yeah, we'll get you the, we'll get you the ball.
Okay, here we go. Well, thank you very much. I'd like to provide an update on the elementary school building committee. Elementary school building and the building committee itself. So thank you for allowing us to provide this update. On this important project for the town of Tewksbury. Which is the design and construction of the new elementary school. My name is Peter Collins. I'm with CBRE. I am working as the owner's project manager, also known as the OPM. With me this evening is Mike Ensminger and Chris Tremblay from CBRE, along with. Vince Dubay from Flansburgh Architects, known as the designer. And Andrew McNeil from Consigly Construction, the construction manager. We have a brief agenda this evening, like to just go through this and share this with you, what we have. It's kind of, um, where we have been summarizing the project to date with some look ahead timelines. So here's some of the topics and some of the items we'll hit. Would certainly like to point out the project team. Certainly, as, uh, Selecton Stronach mentioned, the building committee, both present and past members. Which have volunteered a tremendous amount of their time and expertise on behalf of the community to make this a successful project. I would like to mention their names because I certainly think they're worth mentioning. So please bear with me. Chair Anne Marie Stronach, Vice Chair Jamie Cutlass, Town Manager Richard Montori. Superintendent of Schools Christopher Malone, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Brenda Regan, School Committee Member Shannon Demos, School Business Manager David Libby. Resident and Planning Board Member Eric Ryder, Finance Committee and Industry, um, expert in the, in the, uh, construction industry, engineering. Tom Cook, also a resident and industry, uh, expert in the construction business, Jonathan Champer. Trahan Elementary School Principal Jay Harding. Trahan Teacher Jacqueline Mailey, Resident Lori Sustek, Administrator Maria Cutlass. And the former member and chair who helped get the project through the town in the design phase, Dennis Francis. Certainly, this project would not be as successful as it is without the assistance of the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They certainly have played a vital role in providing grant funding to the project, which is very critical. They have an in-depth and experienced project team at all levels, and they continue to be a partner with the town of Tewksbury. Myself and our, our office, CBRE as the OPM, Flansburgh Architects as the designer, Consigly Construction as the construction manager. Not only those names, but I certainly want to let the select board know that this project is the, is successful. And secondly, with all the extreme cooperation and the engaging opportunities and collaborative manner in which the town agencies. Have provided support to this project for the last several years as this project has moved forward. I've listed most, if not all, the agencies and boards and committees that we've dealt with. As I sit here, I think I've missed one. Um, inadvertently, the Tewksbury Historic Commission as well. We are working with that Department of Commission also. So certainly want to, um, applaud these town agencies who are very cooperative in working with us on this project. I guess I just wanted to quickly highlight why this is a project and what are the issues. The project will be a new elementary school for the district, serving grades two, three, and four. The project will replace the Lewis Davy Tra- Trahan School and the North Street School. So a few bullet items here as to why those schools need to be replaced. Certainly, they're, they have reached their useful age. And they're outdated in many ways. They're obsolete from an, from an instructional design program. Overall, uh, building conditions and infrastructure need modernizing, enrollment increasing, educational space, and flexible space as well. This next slide may seem a little daunting, but I just wanted to share with everyone. The timeline of how we got here. Um, I know there was a master study done by the town back in two thousand five, two thousand six, which evaluated all the schools within the town. It was put together. School district in the town had submitted to the MSBA several invitations. For the replacement and renovation of the elementary schools. It was unsuccessful for several years there, two thousand twelve to fourteen. Finally, in two thousand fifteen, the MSBA invited the town of Tewksbury into the program to replace the Trahan School. In two thousand seventeen, February, the schematic design and the feasibility study commenced. From February seventeenth to June of twenty, the building committee worked together. And selected the project team, known as the OPM, the designer and the construction manager. The study was performed. The MSBA and the town approved the project, as we all know, back in May of two thousand nineteen. The design phase, uh, took place. Contractors bids were received and awarded through June of twenty twenty. Since July of twenty twenty, construction has been underway, which we'll share with you this evening, some photographs and progress of it. The building is scheduled to be completed in the fall of twenty twenty-two. We'll be starting up the building. We're performing the punch list. We're looking to move into the building at this time. Between November and December of twenty twenty-two, looking to occupy the, the new school building. In January of twenty twenty-three, we'll then turn around and do project closeout, MSBA audit, MSBA audit. And other documentation for final grant funding payments through the fall of twenty twenty-three. Quite a timeline there, but that's sometimes what it takes to get a project through. And I certainly want to, um. You know, again, applaud the patience on behalf of the community and the town and for their perseverance. And the patience to build the new school. As you can see, the timeline here is rather extensive, but. The patience and perseverance is certainly prevailing on this project. Just some other quick milestones and tasks that have been completed to date. Just a quick, again, abbreviation, in April of fifteen. The statement of interest for the MSBA. In February of seventeen, two thousand seventeen. They were invited into the program. Two thousand eighteen, the study and the schematic design was completed. In May of two thousand nineteen, the town meeting approved the project and the funding. In June of two thousand nineteen, the construction manager Consigly was selected. And then June, two thousand nineteen through June, uh, twenty twenty, the design and bids and awards were completed. And then in July of twenty, construction began. This next page, I'll try to move it up a little bit here. It's, oops, excuse me, I zoomed out. Technical problem here, one second. Okay. Kind of a dashboard, we call it. It's, there's a lot of information here. The first table is kind of the construction timeline. This is the, what we share with the building committee every month when we meet. The building committee, by the way, meets on the second Thursday of every month at six P M. So with respect to the construction, the GMP of the guaranteed maximum price. That was provided by the construction manager was approved in July. July twenty-third, twenty twenty. We have a current substantial completion date of the project in October twenty-eighth of twenty twenty. For a total of eight hundred and twenty-seven days. As of March eleventh, and we reported this to the building committee. Five hundred ninety-six days remained until substantial completion. The final completion after the punch list is twelve, twelve, twenty-two. Total contract days of eight hundred and seventy-two. So as of March eleventh, twenty-six percent of the time had elapsed. With respect to the, the GMP budget or the cost for the construction, the original budget was seventy-six million. Seven hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. We've had three construction, uh, approved change orders in the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. We have a revised contract amount. We've made sixteen million, ninety-five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents worth of payments. To the contractors through February, or twenty-one percent of their overall contract amount. With respect to the contingency that we have, we have a, um, an owner's construction contingency. We budgeted. Three million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand and forty dollars. As mentioned above, we've approved three change orders. We have a pending change order number four at that time, so we had a balance remaining of just over three million dollars or eighty-four percent for the contingency remaining at this time. We have another set of contingencies set aside with respect to the owner's contingency for other items outside of construction. Things that may come up with respect to furniture, equipment, additional consultants, or other contract amendments outside of construction. That may, that may need to take place. We have one million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars in the budget for that. We have not approved any changes, so the budget remains in full tact at this time. The bottom little chart here is just some, um. Summary points of the project, again, approved by the MSBA and approved by the town. The design enrollment for this project, again, grades two through four, is seven hundred and ninety students. The building's gross square footage is just under a hundred and forty thousand square feet. The total, total project budget, construction, consultants, furniture, equipment, all things included. Is the ninety-eight million, five hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Currently, the MSBA will provide up to, as a maximum grant amount of all eligible cost. To the town, thirty-two million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Or, as they say here, fifty-eight point seven seven percent of eligible cost. One of the, some, several goals of the, of the building committee and the expectations is when they set out on the project. The building committee wants to cer- certainly wants to develop, design, and construct a building that is physically cost effective. Educationally appropriate, excuse me, appropriate and sustainable and flexible. They want to maintain and preserve the educational needs of the district, and they certainly want to adhere to the town warrant article in the MSBA guidelines. The MSBA guidelines, meaning the project funding agreement the town has with the MSBA as far as funding goes. Next screen, where is it? With respect to the community. Since this project has commenced in two thousand seventeen with the design and study, there's been many or frequent updates and meetings throughout the process to the community. We provide a, a project website with project information and updated on a monthly basis. With respect to the local residents or butters around the property, the construction site at the Ryan School Campus. At one thirty-nine Pleasant Street, we have, uh, we have a handful of emails. And the addresses and names of the people who abut the property, and we send them updates when construction activities. Are kind of robust or go beyond certain working hours, so they're aware of the noise and the activity. The superintendent of schools in the school department has provided, and we provided along with them in cooperation. Some updates to the Ryan School community with respect to the parents, the staffing, the, the teachers, and, um. And the faculty there and some of the students as well. I'm going to try to turn it over next to maybe Andrew McNeil or Vince Dubay, the architect and the construction manager. We have a series of slides. Like to share with you. This is an architectural rendering, kind of an overall site plan of what the project's. This is an architectural rendering, kind of an overall site plan of what the project's site will look like once it's completed. Here in the middle, this is the existing Ryan School, just to give you a quick on that one. This front parking lot is currently, currently where the center school stands. This is the driveway or the ring road around the project. You can see all the way around the perimeter. Front entrance to the new school is over in this area. We have a playground between the school and the new athletic field. And off to the southwest corner is additional parking and a practice field in this area This is a site logistics plan. Andrew, if you wanted to say a few words, or I could take it, whatever you so choose. Andrew is with Consigly. This is the Consigly Construction Site Logistics Plan that was established in August. Just kind of gives you a format of how they approach the project, how they are separating their work activity from the Ryan School and the Center School and the area residents to maintain, I'll say, peace and harmony to the best of their ability, so the construction activities can continue.
Yeah, I can jump in here, Peter. Again, this is Andrew McNeil with Consigly. So typically, every month, we have these, these monthly site logistic plans that we share with the, the, the school building committee, and we update these monthly. This one is from back in August, shortly after we mobilized to the project site, where a lot of site work has been completed or was completed, especially taking out the foundations for the fieldhouse and the school building itself. We, we've made a lot, a lot of progress since August to where the fieldhouse has been fully erected, exterior walls have been installed, and we're working on exterior finishes while roughing out the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, and interior partitions. That's just in the corner where the field is kind of showed. Right there is a square at the top of the field. The fieldhouse is at the, the south end of that, where a lot of work has been completed. And then the school footprint is to the east of that rectangle where the field is going to be. A lot of progress has been made there, too, where the structural steel has been 99% completed, working on a couple minor items over the past week or so. We should be wrapped up, probably another week, week and a half, just with the minor items, but concrete slabs are going, exterior framing's going, roofing is being installed in, in a couple sections, and it's, it's starting to really pick up after the, the winter months.
Thank you, Andrew. We have several more slides here. Andrew, if you want, you can, you know, give a quick overview of each slide while you have the floor.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, we can just go through these quickly. So this is a view from the fieldhouse, the existing fieldhouse right now, just showing all of the site work, going in and removing the bleachers and the existing field that was there in preparation for the school footprint. The next one, so this was in October, where we made a lot of progress with the footings and the foundations. You can see the spread footings within the building, and then the exterior foundation walls, the radius of, you know, the, the main entrance, or that's actually the, the north side where the team rooms are. So that's the north classrooms, the east classrooms, and kind of shows the rest of the project site with the Ryan School in the background. Little bit more progress to where we are. This is being the school building itself, where the foundations are nearly complete. Structural steel was ongoing. The, that area in the back is the north classrooms. That was the first area that was erected. To the west, so in the left of the photo, is the, is the gymnasium and the district admin area, and then we were just working our way east, completing that, the structural steel sequencing. February, unfortunately, we got a, a bunch of snow, and painted everything white, and it, and it did have a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of a resequencing that we had to shuffle around with structural steel, and how do we mitigate all those, all the snow and impacts? But with that said, we're still on schedule, we're, we're still in a good place, but just, this just shows the progression of the structural steel. And then just one more from February. This is looking over the, the new football field with the, with the fieldhouse up in the, up in the top right, or, yeah, the top right. So all of that was temporarily enclosed on the second floor. That's what those tarps are. The, the metal panels and the, for the second floor have been delivered today, actually, so we're working on that. And then the, the large curtain wall area in the front will be following shortly after.
And that's a brief summary. I know there's maybe a couple questions we can certainly answer, but I didn't want to take us too, too much time this evening. That is our presentation, and we open it to the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Love it, love it. Ms. Tronick, before I open up to the board?
Um, no, I just want to thank them for that thorough presentation, and I want to just thank, I know that Peter talked about the patience of the community, and I want to thank our butters who have been great neighbors as we have moved forward in this project. I know that it's a challenge having such a large building project being constructed, so I just want to thank them as well.
All right, good stuff. Well, let's do a quick roundtable from the board. How about Mr. Kratman?
Short and sweet. Thank you for the update. This slideshow, is this something that's available that the town could have?
Certainly.
There's, I think this is, it's great informational, but for people listening online, I think it'd be easier for them just to take a look and look through the slideshow and see the progress photos of what's going on. And I think that would be beneficial for people when they have the opportunity to go through and see that, if they have questions on the project. But thank you for the update, I appreciate it.
Mark, if you wouldn't mind, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we have a wonderful website for this. It is linked on the town website as well as the school department website, and they can find not only this slide deck and pictures that have been taken all along, but they'll also be able to find the minutes of our meetings and other important information as it relates to the budget, and those snapshots that we have as well. But we can certainly make sure that we get that on the website, too.
Thank you.
All right, good stuff. How about, Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. I was actually looking up the website on mic. It looks like there's a live camera you can watch during certain hours, I guess not on right now, because it's night.
Yes, yes.
It's great. It's a, the website's really good. It's easy to get to, it's right on the homepage for the, for the school department, so that's fabulous. I appreciate you having this project website, so folks can go and take a look at what's, what's coming before us. Peter, it's very nice to see you again.
Likewise.
Thank you, sir. I always feel that Tewksbury is in good hands when we're, when we have you on the project, so it's really wonderful that it worked out again this time. The only real question I had, I think the progress looks good, it's exciting. The plan is really good, the budget looks good. I look at the updates when we get them from the manager, he provides those to us, and so I, I take a look at those every time. The only question I had is if you could tell us a little bit about the change orders? What are the kinds of things that you require to change?
Well, certainly, the change orders have been, some of the things that have been involved, unknown conditions as we got into the site work, particularly in the early part of the project from July through December, when the contractor advanced the underground utilities, the stormwater systems, the, the collection systems as well, along with some unknown conditions, unsuitable soils, some extended ledge or boulders that we took care of as well. There was some design coordination issues that also took place with respect to the contractors and the designers putting together the underground systems and then coordinating some of the building informational modeling that was done. There was some clash detections that were determined and identified early to prevent reworking some of the systems as they are put together, coming out of the ground or coming out of the mechanical spaces and down the corridors where ductwork, plumbing lines, fire protection lines kind of collide. There was some reworking that was, that was caught early. There was a, a change to, to the concession stand at the athletic fieldhouse, which had some additional cost. There was some interpretations by the local agencies having jurisdictions, such as the, the building commissioner's office or the plumbing inspector with respect to a grease trap or two, where we had to do some additional venting off of, off of the grease trap. All things that are, I would say, sort of normal and sort of customary in the sense of how things come together on a project of this scale, putting together. So that's kind of how it's, it's determined. The bids from the contractors were basically hard bids, so they, they bid the, they bid the numbers on the, on the call, on the construction documents and the bid documents. So when there's a slight change to it, that, that kind of triggers, to some extent, a request for change, and when we look at it and we evaluate it, it's often determined that there is sometimes some additional cost incorporated into that change. So collectively, we put it together, and we go through it, and we end up having some change order work that was shown here. The building committee, through the chair, Tronick, has assembled a construction change order review committee, which comprises members of the building committee who participate prior to the full approval of, of any construction change order. So they're fully aware, and we have a good dialogue and a good discussion, and some review comments back and forth among the design team, the construction manager, the subcontractors, the OPM, and then the building committee before anything is finally finalized and recommended and signed off. So the process is, is very thorough.
Okay, that sounds great. And then I understand the reimbursement figure, when is the reimbursement money, when does that come through from MSBA? Have they reimbursed us any portion of this project yet? What does that look like?
Yeah, yes, they have.
Don't, okay.
Yes, the, by, by way of an agreement called the Project Funding Agreement, also known as a PFA, between the district or the town of Tewksbury and the MSBA, that was executed almost a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago. And once that was triggered, monthly payments are submitted through the town's finance office to the MSBA. They turn around, they review it, they do a quick audit, and they, they make progress payments back to the district of all eligible cost. So as, as money goes in and comes out, money also comes back into the town through the MSBA grant program. They want to pay as you go on a monthly basis. So it's very active. And the final audit, as I was mentioning earlier, that will take place once the project's complete, and the MSBA will pay the last 5% of the district's cost sometime in summer, spring, summer of 2023.
Yep, okay, great. Thank you very much, Peter. I appreciate all your time tonight, and you and the entire project team. Thank you, Emery.
Thank you. And Jane, I just would like to say to that point that the building committee reviews the bills, and they sign off on every individual bill and gets those. So we are pretty current with that, and both Peter and the town manager, as you can well imagine, are very diligent, because we want to get that money back into as we spend it, so.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. Thank you for that. Good, good to understand that process very well. Thank you.
Good stuff. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Short and sweet, nothing really to add, other than a big thank you to the Tewksbury Elementary School Building Committee. I know it's a, it's a lot of work, and then all those involved tonight. It's good to see a bunch of your, your board, the, the committee members attend tonight, and I think the presentation was well. It's great to see the updates. Very exciting project, and there's just a lot of moving parts. So I've enjoyed the updates from the town manager, and have, have been involved in some of the meetings with the elementary school building committee as well as the athletic field committee. So I've been aware of some of the changes and some of the things that have been going on. So fantastic stuff. Thanks very, very much for coming in, and great presentation. Peter, thank you.
Right, I mean, not much to add. I remember, it does seem like 100 years ago that we started this, but here we are, 2021. I mean, it's, it's, I almost say it's like Corona. It seems like it's been here forever, but I see this light at the end of the tunnel in that direction as well, but just fantastic stuff, exciting, super exciting stuff. So thank you for the presentation, and do let us know if we can help at all. Seems like you guys are well on your way, but we're always here to support, you know, we're supporting you in the background. And again, it's very nice, too, that the, the committee members showed up on this call as well, very, very commendable. So I thank you, you thank you. Thank you all very much, Ms. Tronick, for your leadership.
Thank you, and the project's in good hands with the town manager, the building committee, and all other town agencies. Thank you very much.
And I'd just like to thank the committee for all their work, because it is a heavy lift. So thank you to everybody.
All right, very good. We're going to move into one project into another project. The next one, we're going to move, we're a little bit behind, but that's fine, is the new center fire station update.
Mr. Chairman, I'll jump in quickly, if you don't mind. We have John Lemieux with us from Vertex, who is our owner's project manager on this, on this project, and the fire chief, Joe Kearns, is with us also. I believe John has a very brief presentation to go through. Ryan Dorrington, if he can share, he'll pull that up for us. I'll turn it over to John.
Great, thanks, Richard. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so thanks, everybody. Pleasure to be here tonight. My name is John Lemieux from the Vertex Companies. We are your owner's project manager for the central fire station project. The contractor for this project is GNR Construction out of Quincy, and the architect for this project is HKT Architects out of Somerville. I'm going to start with just giving you some pictures to show you the status of the project. We're about a quarter of the way through the project. As of the end of February, moving into March, we're going to be somewhere in the mid to high 30% tile completion. As you can see on the left here, this is a picture of the architect's rendering of the project, and next to it, you have the current state of the building as of two days ago. South elevation, and as you can see, the exterior sheathing is going up at this point. Lots going on in and around the building. The steel stringers for the stairs are being installed as we speak, so once these are in and the stair panels are filled, we'll be able to have folks over for a tour, anybody who's interested. Right now, which is, there's too much, too much ladder work to be able to invite anybody in, you know, climb around and get to all the different levels. On the right, you can see a picture of the roof membrane installation that is underway. This is a picture of second floor progress. As you can see, a lot of the steel studs are up. That wallboard that you see there is fiberglass den's glass sheathing that's going up in between a, a set of walls, so that is not drywall. So you might look at the picture and go, wait a minute, why are you putting wallboard up with no windows? That's not the case. This is a fiberglass project, product, and this is just part of the construction process. Again, ductwork started yesterday as well, which is a, a great sign for the project. This is a look at the third floor look, looking across the street. Again, good progress on that level as well. As far as the schedule, we are on schedule with the project. Substantial completion for this job is targeted for October 29th of this year. As you, what you see here is a look at GNR's three-week look ahead, so you can get, get an idea of what's coming in the, in the coming, in the coming weeks. Slab-on-grade prep, second floor framing, liquid applied insulation, sheathing and framing and sheathing of the third floor exterior walls, installation of the air vapor barrier, second floor roofing, as well as an idea of what's happening on the interior, rough plumbing and electric, and overhead HVAC, as well as fire protection on the second floor. So the, you know, the, the job is moving along quite well. As I said, the project is on schedule, and we're under budget. 26% complete, and it's in February 28th, the, the February requisition. Original Original contract was 12.1 million. The change orders to date are 133,000. And those change orders, really, there's a number of PCOS, but really, the majority of these dollars fall into two categories. The first was that the low bid electrical subcontractor was removed by protest. So we had to move to the second place electrician, and that cost us about $58,000. And then secondly, we had latent subsurface condition with regards to the knotweed, which was a lot worse than expected, required a lot more excavation and removal. And that was another 55-ish thousand dollars. So between those two items, that's a majority of the change orders to date. That brings our contract value to 12.3 million. And again, we've completed just over 3 million worth of work. So as of the end of February, 26% complete. Happy to say too that we've had minimal COVID impacts on the project to date. Very little, you know, there were some COVID hits to some of the employees that lose a little bit of time there. A little bit of time because of weather, but again, everything was recoverable. And, you know, everybody's healthy. And so far, so good as far as COVID impacts regarding materials. Not a whole lot. We're getting a few grumblings from some subcontractors about any forward price change order work. They'll only honor their price for a couple of weeks because of the volatility in the market. But the good news for Tewksbury is that, you know, you bought the project months ago. So, you know, the prices are locked in for the project. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
On time and on the budget. I don't know how, any questions, team? Any questions from the board? Fantastic. How about Mr. Tronic?
Sorry, I was still muted, whatever. No, I have no questions. And similar to the fire station, it's great to go to the center of town and see that project moving right along. And I appreciate the work. And that too has been a project that's been happening for quite some time. So I appreciate that. It's nice to see our fire station going up. Thank you.
Good stuff. How about Mr. Krappman?
I have nothing particular on the project. I think that's great news. The only thing, I know there's been some talk about the bank that's out in front of the building that may be leaving town or whatever it is, and the consideration for that, for use also for the frontage of the project.
So I can jump in on that, Mr. Chairman. So the bank will be closing in May, if not sooner. And they will be selling the property. They know that the town is interested in purchasing the property. And they are just working through their due diligence. And they may give us the right of buying the property before they go out in the open market.
Okay, that's very good news. Thank you.
Very good. How about Miss Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really briefly, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for already explaining the change orders because that was my question.
I took my cue from your last presentation. I was ready for you.
Very good, John. I like that about you very much. I appreciate that. My only question is sort of what's the status for the site preparation? And particularly access from the neighborhood and back. I drive by and check out the construction all the time. So when you're ready for a tour, I want to be your first guest. Chief, I would love to. And I do, I think I drive by every weekend and park in the back of the bank and take a look at what you guys are doing. So I'm driving people crazy to my family, but I'm okay with that. So anyway, yeah, I was curious about how the site was coming along and the access to the neighborhood in the back. How's that going? eventual. I'm not sure that's happening now.
Yeah, no, it's not. It's not happening now. You know, right now, the focus, primary focus was to get that building up and out of the ground. You know, knock on wood, we had a very cooperative winter. You know, a couple of snow events here and there. I mean, it is New England at the end of the day. We get spoiled with these winters where very little happens. And then we get some snow and everyone says, well, we got delayed. It's like, well, you should have expected some of this. But I would say that, you know, we've got a good contractor, which is nice. And, you know, things are moving along, moving along well. So, you know, I would expect, you know, as the weather improves, you know, again, also earthwork in the winter months, you know, as far as, and the springtime, you're always cognizant of runoff, erosion, all those sorts of things. So waiting until it's a little drier out, you know, a little bit more stabilized. You know, the focus primarily though was on the vertical nature of the building. And obviously, you know, it's a whole lot to be done in the next seven months. But, you know, they're moving along at a decent clip. So I would expect to see lots of change, you know, from a month-to-month basis here moving forward.
It's interesting because that view you showed from the top floor, from the third floor, you can almost, it's almost like a smoke tower. You can see so much of Tewksbury from that level. It'll be interesting.
We can see Town Hall and the town manager can see us every single day.
I know. I know. It's in the background of all their calls all day long. Like, how's the construction over there? You're looking. Mr. Manager, can you tell us if you're getting any requests from the residents for public engagement? I know you're very proactive on the elementary school project, working with the residents in that area. And I just didn't know if there was quite that requirement in this case.
No, we haven't. At this point, we haven't had any. In the beginning, before the project started, we did talk to residents that are behind the building because we thought we would need parking and access from that area, which we don't because the bank has accommodated us for parking. So there's really only one person back there and there haven't been any issues. There haven't been any issues with the roaming boarding house in front. So so far, everything is going well. We haven't heard any issues.
Thank you. I haven't either, but I appreciate you taking the time to answer these questions. Thank you for coming out tonight, and I hope you all get to enjoy the rest of your evening.
Perfect. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing really to add other than through you to, I see we have Chief Kearns on the video. I didn't know, Mr. Lemieux, thank you very much for your presentation. Chief Kearns, I didn't know if you could comment just to see how plans are, how you feeling? I know there's probably some planning since it's October. I know it's a ways away, but any thoughts on moving stuff over when it's ready? What's your plans?
Yeah, Brian, it's going really well. And, you know, I have to say that John and Mike Quinlan from Vertex are outstanding on this project. You know, as our project manager, they were keeping an eye on making sure things are done right. As far as the future with us moving over there, I've already started talking with a few guys here, making a little committee up of, you know, how we're going to try to transition over to the new building. But as we joked about before with the town manager, there really isn't too much from this building that will be taken with us over that station. But overall, the experience has been great. Like I said, John and his guys have really been on top of things, so.
Well, it's great to be here tonight, and I'm glad you're walking hand in hand with the project from the get-go, so.
I appreciate that, Brian. And just on a separate note, good luck to you. Fire Department certainly appreciated all the support you've given us.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that, Joe. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All right, good stuff. Yeah, I don't have much to add. Again, on time, on the budget. Mr. Montoro, we do get questions for the old fire station, if we have any ideas or thoughts there. But I think it's a little premature to even get on that path as well, right? Potentially, what way would you reuse, not reuse, or repurpose the old fire station, the center fire station?
Yeah, so right now, probably in the short term, the school maintenance is renting space off of Washington Street. We'll probably move them into the old fire station to save some rental cost for about a year. We're thinking of that. But then, within this budget that John mentioned, there is funding in there to demolish the building and create green space. And then the town from there can decide what they want to do.
Okay, perfect.
The building isn't good for anything else.
We're all, that's why we're here today, exactly. So, so awesome. So Chief, thanks a million and thanks a million to the project leaders, John and team. And I'm looking forward to future updates and looking forward to October. So October is the date, right? October?
Substantial completion, October 29th.
Awesome. Very good. Okay. All right. Thanks again. Thanks, Chief.
All right, guys. Have a good night. Take care.
Good night. All right, next, next brings us to our residence portion of the meeting. Do we, I know we have folks on, we have another presentation here on the new business. But Brian, do we have any residents that wish to have public comment?
We have no callers at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we know there's like a 30 or 60 second lag. So let's, why don't we proceed? And if a resident calls in, we'll certainly entertain that call. So why don't we move to new business? And under new business, we have the Tewksbury Home Building Soldier Presentation on the Veterans Housing on 1660 Main Street. See some familiar faces.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and other members of the board. I think you probably know who I am. Bruce Penelitis, I'm the president of Tewksbury Home Build. And we have several guests here. If possible, I don't know if Brian can give, oh, Peter already has it. Good. So Peter's going to start to share some pictures of some of the other Soldier on projects that they've completed. I just want to give a quick, brief thing, and I'll turn it over to Peter. Just to remind you, we did come in front of the board way back in 2018 to discuss this project right after we had acquired the land on Main Street. It's adjacent to Heatherwood. And we had a different partner at the time. And due to some delays there, we ended up moving on and are very happy with our new partnership with Soldier on. And again, they'll tell you about themselves as far as what they do. And just in addition to building some really great affordable housing for veterans, they also provide all sorts of services to those veterans. And it will be a real asset to the community. So originally, when we did present to the town, we were with our original partner. We were looking at a unit size of about 16 units, but those were to be two and three bedroom units. Working with Soldier on here, we're looking at more units but smaller. So the building side is probably roughly the same as it would have been otherwise, but it's we're currently, I think, and Peter can correct me, I think we're at 21 or 22 units. Three, and he'll go through the details, but I think most are one bedroom and a couple of suites in there. So I'll turn it over to Peter, and he can introduce the full Soldier on team. But I appreciate the time tonight. We, just to let you know, we have already spoken and presented some version of this to the local housing partnership with, and also to the planning board last night. So we are trying to sort of bring the project out to all of the relevant committees to give the community a chance to see what we've got going on there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Peter.
Thanks, Bruce. Peter Graham here. I'd like to actually introduce Bruce Buckley, the CEO of Soldier on, to kind of walk through Soldier on's mission and organizational background. And he's as well on the call.
Well, thank you, Peter. Thank you, Bruce. And thank you to the select board for entertaining our project tonight and getting kind of a preliminary snapshot. So I'll be brief with Soldier on, which is difficult for me because we do do a lot and we have accomplished a lot, I feel, in the last 25 years. We're a private 501(c)(3) in Massachusetts that started in 1994. And really, it started in response to a national movement where the VA and the Department of Defense really formally acknowledged that homelessness and housing stability was an issue specific to the veteran community. And they began funding programs like Soldier on. Instead of doing the services themselves, they began funding nonprofits. So to kind of move us quickly forward, we started as a transitional program for veterans who are chronically homeless. We started at the VA in Northampton. And from there, we've grown into a campus in Pittsfield, Mass., where we started with transitional. But really, we saw the need for permanent housing because many of the veterans who came through our program and the transitional program would get back on their feet, go back out into the world. And we'd often see them again, six months, 12 months, two years later. So we began building permanent housing and really did not know what we were doing and are still certainly learning. And we just started with a wonderful idea in probably 2005, 2006. And we were able to put together our first building, which if you look at number one here, our 39 units of permanent housing on our campus in Pittsfield that opened in January of 2011. And I really want to point out that we can show you these buildings and the buildings are beautiful. I could live in any of the buildings that we build. But I think what's really important are the services that we provide because we continue to grow services. We provide a meal a day for any of the veterans in our permanent housing that want this. We provide a lot of transportation. We provide a case manager for everyone. That's really the same model that we use, not only in our transitional, but in the SSVF, which is an acronym for an outreach program, which we run in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York, and Massachusetts. So our experience has really led us to be able to support the veterans who move into our permanent housing. And without spending a lot of time on each building, those buildings, number two is in Chicopee, Mass. It's an old school that we renovated. Number three is a transitional female veteran program that's on the Leeds VA campus. Number four is an old building in Agawam that we converted into 51 units of housing. Number five is on the Leeds VA campus or Northampton. We built 44 units of permanent housing. The number six building is our female veterans permanent housing building that we just opened in May of this year that has 14 formerly homeless female veterans. Number seven is kind of our first move into Eastern Mass., where we partnered with Brighton Marine in Brighton, Mass. And helped serve 25 veterans who live permanently in that building on the Brighton Marine campus. And number nine is obviously a rendering of a 70-unit building that was under construction in Titten Falls, New Jersey, where we also have a pretty good footprint. So I'll just reiterate, we provide a lot of services from telehealth. We provide free legal services for the veterans that live in our buildings. And this accomplishes wills, power of attorneys, healthcare proxies. We actually build on many of our properties a columbarium, which we learned was a need in response to the veterans who do stay with us till the end of their life, which many of them do. And this is a place to inter the ashes for the veterans. And many of them choose to have their ashes intered permanently in their Soldier on community. So I think without spending a lot of time, I could, again, I could talk all day about what we do. We're thrilled to be invited to Shrewsbury, to Tewksbury, and have worked very well with Tewksbury Home Build to kind of see the site, work with a local architect, Jack Sullivan and James Henley, the local civil engineer, to begin to put together a building and an idea that, you know, we hopefully can share with you tonight and continue to grow with you. So I'll turn it over to Peter to kind of dig into this particular building.
Yes, thanks, Bruce. It has been really a pleasure to work with the local folks at Tewksbury Home Build and the local folks who are seriously committed to making this project work. I am going to switch to, actually, I will take a, this view here is Main Street at the bottom of the screen and the proposed site layout for what we're proposing. 1660 is, as Bruce Penelitis mentioned, just to the other side of the Heatherwood property here. I'm going to switch now to a rendering shot. The rendering that you see here is actually of the main entrance, which the building is not, doesn't sit square to the main street. But it's this other side of the building that you would see for the most part from the street. Also, it should be noted that the current rendering here shows the building really at or above the street level grade. And we actually will be lowering that significantly, given there is a serious topography drop off there. And that'll also help blend the building's height in to the surrounding area. So we, as Bruce mentioned, we presented to the local housing partnership. We also gave a concept introduction to the planning board last night with some great feedback that we will be incorporating into the, into the, into the design. We are looking to get it permitted in the next couple of months with the plan to apply for funding. This would be 100% affordable. This would be 100% affordable veteran housing and we would fund it similar to the development that was recently done in Pittsfield with the state and some national housing trust funds, as well as private donations. One thing that's important for folks to know is that in all of our properties like this, we have fully furnished the units so that when folk, when the veterans move in, they have fresh furniture to, to not have to worry about cobbling together things. We also have van service, which is a significant element that helps alleviate the need for parking. Many of our veterans actually don't have cars. Some are, we have handicap and folks that just, just aren't in that, are in the public transit mode. And our vans service them, provide door-to-door service for medical appointments and everything. I will show you as well, just a view of one of the layouts. As Bruce mentioned, there will be 18 one-bedrooms are proposed and three studio apartments. In the lobby area, there would be laundry and a community room and a, an office where folks could have meetings with, with, whether it's medical or private needs, as well as the local group, Tewksbury Home Build would have an opportunity to use the office. So I think that covers it. We appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and, and I know that it's exciting to see schools being built in Tewksbury and a new fire department, fire station. I also would like just to show this property here is the single-family home that Tewksbury Home Build has built and Soldier On is going to help them put a veteran in this home on South Street. We're working through with the town to get it added to the housing, affordable housing stock and conduct a lottery for veteran, for a veteran family. So this is fantastic work that Tewksbury Home Build did with the local school and volunteers to build that house. So thanks again. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but we also have Jim Henley is available to answer questions if people have some related to the site.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Peter and team. Now, let's do a quick roundtable from the board. How about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank Soldier On and Bruce and Tewksbury Habitat Build. This is a really exciting project. This is my second time seeing this project in this formal setting. As you know, I represent you all at the housing partnership and we're really excited about this. I picked up, gleaned a few more interesting things and I just want to say, what is really unique about this to me is the services that Soldier On provides to these veterans and really kind of stands it all up for them in terms of those services as almost like a one-stop shop, for lack of a better term, on my part. But I really am excited about this project and I want to thank everybody involved and for this work and just can't say enough about it. It's really great stuff to have this type of affordable housing going in for our veterans. And really Habitat Build is, you know, instrumental in getting this across the finish line. So I want to thank them for their work. Lot of volunteer hours in that organization, so I appreciate that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. How about Mr. Krabman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is wonderful. That's what it pretty much comes down to, making affordable housing and servicing veterans. There's nothing better than that. I think this is something we need desperately in our community. My only question was, when people are, I mean, obviously, all veterans are important, but is there any consideration given to locals? Is that while, when servicing that? Because I know we have a waitlist on our own housing and a lot of them are veterans that are waiting to get into certain places. Is there any consideration that local veterans would be able to move in there? And like I said, they're waiting right now.
Right. Well, what we, what, what we have available to us with, what we're looking to do is leverage an enormous amount of state funds to help put this together. And the state does allow a local preference. It has, it comes with certain parameters as to what is allowed, but it most definitely would allow a local preference when the municipality can, combined with us, show there is a, a local need that is not being met. It is also important to know that if we do our job right, and as I can tell from the times I've been up in Tewksbury, people are very anxious to see something like this happen. We'll have, we'll have a waiting list of people from Tewksbury, ready to kind of queue up and go as we, as we do the lease-up on this development.
That's excellent news. I, I know a number of veterans that have, either from the Knights or the Elks or other communities have been telling me that they've been on a waiting list and trying to get into certain places. So the more available housing, affordable housing, especially for the people that serve, serve that country, I couldn't be more in favor of this. So thank you very much for your work.
Sure.
How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. I, this is the first time I've seen this presentation. This is wonderful. Thank you, Bruce, for bringing it forward. Thank you, Peter, for giving us more information. I read through the brochure and the information you sent us earlier. I just had a couple of quick questions. I also wanted to say that I really like the holistic approach that you're offering. So it's not just housing, but it's really working for the, the whole individual that's there and all their, meeting all their needs. So I think that's such an asset for our community. Will this be a facility for men and women or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have, we, we plan not to have any specificity to one or the other.
Well, I heard some of that in the conversation, like this is a women's facility. So I just wanted to make sure.
We did, we, the number six on the screen is a women's specific facility. And, and certainly, there's, there's a lot of effort made to make sure that folks who have suffered from military sexual trauma or other issues have a safe place that they feel comfortable in. But we also know in the women's program that we have, that there are plenty who just want to be in a stable housing situation and this is what would offer that.
And I appreciate that you explained both, all of that and that's, I value that very much. So thank you for that. And you, you mentioned that you put in columbariums in some of your facilities. And so that made me wonder, are you planning to do that here? And then what is the typical deed restriction on our property like this?
Well, I'll answer the columbarium piece. So I think if that's appropriate and it's, you know, I think fits the community, which generally, I, you know, we have it and I believe four of our five buildings essentially, there's a picture of one actually in our Agawam property with an eternal flame. And, you know, I think it certainly, we would be happy to do it if it fits. We don't have to do that, but it seems to work in a lot of ways that the, the men and/or women that live there, that do want to become, you know, it's part of their community and it's a way that the other veterans can really spend time with their, their community that's passed away. So hopefully it works because I think it does add to the, the community nature of the property.
And I, I can speak to the deed restriction. So the Department of Housing and Community Development, in, in funding and, and kind of leveraging the money that they have available to do these kinds of developments, comes with a deed restriction for affordability. As long as the property is affordable and maintaining that, the, what we call the soft debt stays in place with the property.
All right. Well, thank you so much again. I appreciate all of your time this evening to come forward. It's, I know it's getting late and you're taking time away from your families. The work is really good. The, the ethic in Tewksbury has been to support veterans' housing for a long time and the support is here for you. And I'm so glad that you are coming to be part of our community. And I look forward to working with you in the future. If there's a build day or you need any help, I've helped Bruce before. I did, you know, kind of an okay job. I only nailed the wall to the floor one time, just one time. And I've learned from that now. So I'm, I'm great. I'm your number one volunteer. Thank you very much.
The house is still standing, Jane.
Good job. Thanks, Bruce. I appreciate that.
How about, how about Mr. Brian Dick?
Just short and sweet. Thanks, Bruce, for bringing this to our community and Soldier On, partnering with Soldier On. This is fantastic. I mean, it looks, the portfolio that I'm seeing, it looks like it never snows. So that's pretty impressive. Bring that to the Berry, if you could. It's really nice to hear the local preferences, Mr. Krabman pointed out, that you, you are thinking of our local veterans. It's just wild on the services, as Mrs. Tronick said, it's, it's just having those services along with a great facility. What a tremendous effort. Hats off to everybody involved. So we do have some, some open space coming up with, with the new school being built. There will be some vacancies to rehab some existing structures, so keep that in mind. It would be great to see another type of building like this in Tewksbury. I think it's great for the community. So thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, short and sweet. We know there's a need, to Mr. Krabman's point, you know, we all try to help veterans. I think that, right now, we have a two and a half year waiting list, you know, for a Vietnam, amputee. So there's a huge need, and that's too long, two and a half years. It's crazy. So with all that being said, it's, it's, it's wonderful. How can we help you? As far as veteran services, and obviously, there's a cost to the town, and as far as your model, the state, private and Soldier On, can we help get in front of that in case there's an additional cost to the town and around veteran services?
So what, what you may be referring to is the, I guess, Chapter 115. On, on the one hand, I would be remiss to say that we, we look for support and will look to come back to you all with, with a housing partnership contribution or whether it's CPA dollars or however you support affordable housing, we would look to kind of have some local match on the actual development of this. So we will be back. But when it comes to an actual regular additional municipal cost, I can't imagine, especially if we get folks who are Tewksbury residents, who are already either getting a kind of a cost of living or a minimum payment through Chapter 115, it, it should be pretty minimal. And then with the, the whole idea of our wraparound services is that many of the, many of the costs that happen with, whether it's, you know, emergency visits or calls or, you know, paramedics and such like that, will have, you know, we, we help folks get to their doctor's appointments, get a meal a day into their stomachs and, and kind of make sure that people have another set of eyes on them to kind of reduce some of that other municipal cost that can, can be involved with, with clients who may have some needs. But on top of that, there is of course Soldier On Foundation and, and the other Soldier On Services that just help really wrap around to bolster municipal services as it is.
I, I think we would also look to work with the town, and I think it's usually a good fit. We have a fairly extensive transportation system that's based in Pittsfield, but it's software that was given to us with a grant with the Department of Defense and the Department of Transportation. And it allows us kind of, I call it Uber. It's an oversimplistic term, but we have tablets in all of our vehicles and we can add anywhere in the United States onto this system. And what we're looking to do in New Jersey, that we do extensively in Western Mass, is be able to maybe even hire a veteran or two or three that live in the building to do some driving for us and use this system to even be able to provide transportation to veterans in the town, if it's appropriate, at no cost to the veteran, which it's typically what we do here in Western Mass. And we can bring the veteran to the VA, we can bring the veteran to medical appointments through this system and a scheduling system. And we also MRT approve, which allows us to do Medicaid transportation and receive some mass Medicaid funding to help do that. So, you know, if it fits, if it's appropriate, I think we have the tools where we can become, you know, a service provider for the town and ideally hire veterans in our building or other veterans in the community that may want to drive for us. So I think there are other ways we can work together and kind of share what we do and how we do it and, you know, offer some other services and a partnership with the town.
That's what I was going to conclude. I said, looking forward to the partnership. I mean, it's wonderful stuff. So, so any other questions from the board? Like you said, wonderful stuff, looking forward to the ongoing partnership. But I think you probably can tell now, between the planning board and the local housing authority and the select board, you know, we're, we're, we're eager to get started with you all. So thank you very much. Thank you, Bruce and team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty. All right, looking at the agenda, I think that pretty much wraps up our agenda. Brian, I'll ask you, are there any residents on the line?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Why don't we conclude the residence portion? The only other thing I wanted to bring up, I don't know, Mr. Brian Dick, if you wanted to bring up, in the order of new business, we do have a meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is set for actually April, hey, let me just bring it up very quickly. I just wanted to run it by the board for thought. Our next meeting is April 6th. However, however, our election is April.
Thank you.
Okay. Peter's still on. So I'm just, what I'd like to ask the board is, our next meeting is scheduled for April 6th. The election is, keep me honest here, I believe the election is April 11th. Do I have that date right?
10.
The 10th. Thank you, the 10th. So my thought process would potentially be to cancel the meeting on April 6th and to have our next meeting April 13th for the reorganization. I think it makes sense. And then have the next select board meeting would be the 27th of April. So I just, again, food for thought. Want to socialize it with the board and get your thought, get your thoughts.
Well, Mr. Chairman, really, I, I don't know if we really need to make a decision tonight. My, my thought is that we did cancel a meeting and now we just had a meeting that went on for, you know, we had major presentations. So I, I don't know. I'd like to hear the town manager's perspective, if he has anything that he believes is going to come in front of us in the next week before we canceled it.
Mr. Chairman, as of right now, there is nothing that, well, actually, I shouldn't say that. That night, we do have the transfer of the liquor licenses for the country club. They have been advertised, so I think you're going to need to have the meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, then that settles it. Okay. Again, so we'll meet three times in April and then there goes this extra time to prepare for town meeting as well. So, okay, fair enough. All right, then that's all I had. Any minutes? I don't think we have any minutes. So it's board member reports. How about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have an elementary building update, as you've already received it. And Thursday night, we are meeting with the housing partnership and at 7 o'clock. And again, the events committee is working on to see what we can do for the fall and those are my only updates. I'd just like to thank everybody for, it, it was, while it was a long meeting and we had a lot of presentations, it's just really exciting to me as a member of this board to sit here, hear from our delegation, being so vested in our community, hear about all the good work that we about all the good work that we are, uh, that's happening all around town, which our residents supported in, at town meeting because this wouldn't be happening without our resident support. And I just want to say thank you to everybody for, um, making Tewksbury's a good, great community that it is. Proud to live here and serve. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. How about, uh, Mr. Krabman?
Uh, well, um, no real updates. Uh, economic development is meeting tomorrow night. LRTA is meeting Thursday night. Uh, zone, uh, the only thing I'd like to do is, uh, for the zoning. If you, uh, I know there's been a number of videos, um, and we have a warrant item, article coming up and, um, they've worked very hard and working a number of videos to show exactly what the zoning changes are proposed. So I would like residents to take the time to go on, familiarize yourself prior to getting to the meeting in May. And if you could view, see what's happening, uh, and then this way hopefully, uh, you know, can answer a lot of the questions prior to getting to the, uh, town meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Good stuff. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few things. Um, first I wanted to recognize and honor, um, Tewksbury Police Officer Nick Caramella, who is going to be deployed to Baghdad, Iraq next week, um, in the U.S. Embassy there for 400 days. Uh, I just want to take a moment to thank him for his service to this community and our country and we wish him all the best. Um, second, the Tewksbury General Bylaw Committee met on March 11th. We organized, uh, we're also going to be meeting on the second Thursday at 6:00 PM. Um, we've already had some discussions about public engagement and how we want to secure our engagement from the beginning and work with, uh, residents, uh, throughout the process. And, um, first up, we'll be taking up title one and title two. Our next meeting is April 8th, um, Saturday, May 8th, from nine to two is cleanup day. Mark your calendars, ladies and gentlemen. Um, and there will also be paper shredding and, um, electricity recycling options that time and that'll be offered from nine to noon on that day. There'll be more information coming out. You'll see it everywhere, but mark your calendars for cleanup day. Um, third, well, actually fourth, I guess, uh, rental and mortgage assistance program is up and running. Um, and I thank the town manager and the, and his staff and the World Fund Bank for bringing that program forward. I know there haven't been a ton of applications. It is for folks that are already in arrears with their rent or their mortgage up to two months or for $5,000 per person. I hope people will apply. I hope you folks will help us get the word out. Um, that application deadline is March 31st. Mr. Montori, is that correct? 30th? Something like that.
Thirty first.
So, um,
Yes, the 31st.
31st. So, um, there, the state will have a RAMA program, rental and mortgage assistance program coming up that they'll be offering as well statewide. So this, for folks that are behind, this is a local program. We can move really quickly to help folks. And then the state also has a program that will be launching about the time we're finishing. So there's, uh, still help out there for, um, individuals that are, uh, suffering financial loss from CO, that's COVID related. Um, next week, there's a preliminary meeting with Mass DOT, NIMCOG and town officials working together on the Tewksbury Rail Trail Project. We'll see if that can be advanced as we go. Um, and then there was a conversation today between, uh, the manager, um, the, uh, Dave Libby with the school department, um, and the principal of the Trahan School, Mr. Harding and myself about some changes to the traffic patterns, um, over at the Trahan to accommodate students coming back in full, in person in that location, beginning April 5th. Um, we had a really good conversation about the different impacts that they're seeing, the expectation of higher traffic, um, trips for, into parents who are driving their students, um, to and from school. Um, we suspect as folks get more comfortable, they'll be more, more comfortable putting children on buses and the, the distancing has been, um, reduced on the busing. So that'll be easier to accommodate. I know Ms. Stronik is aware of all of these, um, things. So, but there's been some impacts to the neighborhood, um, in terms of changing that traffic pattern on those local roads. And I know there were some residents that were concerned about how that was going to be impacted. Public safety has been involved in this process. Um, I support the conclusions that that group has come up with, um, to access those side roads behind the school. Um, so it's March and Madeline and Wilson Roads. Um, but there will be, from my understanding, um, some police that will be there to help direct traffic, keep it safe for, um, the residents that are there, keep the impacts minimal and keep, uh, traffic queuing to the site. Um, and so I appreciate the time that they give today. I know there'll be public notice going out to the impacted neighborhood, um, in the next day or two, um, with some written information as well and an opportunity for residents to give feedback. So, and Mr. Montori, I don't know if you want to augment what we talked about?
Yeah, no, that, I think that covered everything. The, um, uh, the business manager was working on a code red that will go out to the neighborhood and a mailing that will go out to the neighborhood. He did speak to, uh, a resident, uh, today and, um, address some issues. Um, I think we're going to have to, you know, see how it goes and ensure that there's not a lot of, um, queuing on the, uh, the neighborhood streets that we move cars through. Uh, this will begin on, um, March 29th. Um, you know, that's, uh, you know, they won't, you know, cars won't be, uh, able to access the Trahan School, uh, via Salem Road, uh, any longer. Um, and we just think, uh, it'll provide better safety for the, um, the drop off all around and not impact, uh, Salem, Salem Road, um, back to the intersection. So we'll see how it goes. The police will be involved. If we need to make adjustments, we will. If residents have any concerns, they can call, uh, the school administration office or my office and we'll try to address any concerns.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, if you would have mind.
Please.
My apologies. I, um, first of all, I just want to thank the town manager and, uh, select enrollment for bringing this up, but I do think that if other schools have the same problem, they may want to contact the school administration because I agree that this could potentially be an issue as families, uh, work to bringing their kids back. I think that once they get their kids back, but I don't think it's going to be unique to that one school. So I do think that the school department will be very responsive to that. So I would urge people, if they have concerns on that first week in April, that they contact the school department rather than just thinking, um, that it's going to go away on its own. Thank you.
Okay. How about, uh, Mr. Brian Dick?
Uh, just one thing. So next Tuesday, the 30th, we're going to have an athletic field subcommittee meeting to talk about furnitures and fixtures in the fieldhouse as well as naming, uh, locations for the fieldhouse and flagpole, things like that. That's about it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, perfect. So we have you for one more meeting, Mr. Brian Dick. You tried to get out tonight. We're not going to let you. So, uh, one more meeting. Um, and I just want to, Mr. Stronik kind of touched upon it, even tonight's meeting, um, so many residents, literally residents, um, of, of Tewksbury participated and have been participating in a lot of these things here and, and all during COVID, you know, all during a pretty lousy year. So pretty good meeting. And again, we're only a piece of the puzzle. When you have so many residents have come to this meeting, um, it's just pretty cool to see what this community does, what this town does, um, time and time again. And I think tonight was a perfect example of that. And again, Mr. Montori, um, you know, a lot of credit Shawway too, with all these different projects and yet we just keep on moving forward and moving forward and moving forward again with the residents and we're only a small piece of it. But, um, it was good stuff, really good stuff. So with that being said, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm sorry. The last thing is my kids are all here, so I do have a fake background. Folks think I live in a penthouse, which is the father's thing from the case, but my kids are all home, so they pushed me in the basement. So anyhow, so now I will look for a motion for, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? In, in a second. So roll call, well, final of the night. Ms. Stronik.
Hi.
Mr. Krabman.
Hi, from Hollywood.
Ms. Wellman.
Hi.
Mr. Brian Dick.
Hi.
Chair of Sciencefall. Thank you very much. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.